President.
Mr. Whalen. Ms. Wyman.
Here.
Mayor Satterthwaite.
Here.
The first item is additions to the agenda. I have one correction. Item six, that ordinance number should be 2004-01-010. Everyone will make note of that. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Okay. Mayor Satterthwaite, is there a staff report?
No.
Need to report. Okay. Well, then we'll move on to the minutes of the January 12, 2004 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Go ahead.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hayes, second by Ms. Wyman. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next is public input. Is there any member of the public who wishes to address the committee? Okay. Well, then, in that case, we will...oh, committee members? Anyone have anything you care to share? Ms. Wyman?
I'd just like to congratulate Ms. Chenoweth for being awarded the best politician in the paper, or according to the readers of the paper. So, congratulations. Well deserved.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Okay. Next, we're going to move to the GIS presentation, and I believe John Dimmitt, Executive Director, except there's a new title, CEO of the Regional Planning Commission, would like to introduce this.
Good evening. I just want to very quickly provide an introduction here. Come this July, we will have ended the first two years of operation of the GIS consortium, and we're here tonight to give you a progress report on where we are as we begin to enter into the second two years. And I would like to introduce Mark Tolson, who is our GIS manager. Mark has been with us since August. We did have a turnover in that staff position last summer, and since Mark has come forward and served us, we have made a considerable amount of progress building upon the work that was done in the first year and a half. You may recognize the name. Yes, he is related to someone who used to be involved with the Champaign Park District. And so, we're quite happy to have Mark join us. He has reformatted the staff and has definitely put his imprint on our program. Prior to coming with us, Mark operated his own GIS company in Rockford for several years and left that company to come with us, so we're very pleased to have him. Turn it over to Mark.
Thank you.
Hello? Got the presentation up there, or wherever you can see it best. If you can see that all right? I'll get started. I've been here, as John said, since August. The first couple of months, I'm just going to go over today kind of a state of the GIS, where we are right now, including what we've done, what we're doing, and what we hope to accomplish in the next couple of years.
Could I ask you to pull your...the microphone just a little bit closer, because people will be watching on television, they won't be able to hear the voice with the presentation?
Okay.
Thanks.
Better?
Yeah.
Okay. First couple of months was essentially an orientation process for me, getting familiar with what had been accomplished, primarily what had been taken care of before I got here. The hardware and software that we're going to need for this project, most of it had been purchased. There were a couple experimental projects that had been completed. Staff, when I arrived, we had some student interns, most of whom left at the end of the summer. So, during the fall, we've been building up the staff again. Very soon, we should have four full-timers. We're looking to fill a fifth slot, and we still have a couple interns. So, we have a very capable staff in place now. Products that are completed to date, the ortho photographs countywide, which you can see an example of in the background there, the electronic tax map atlas and scanned imagery, which I'll give some examples and show you some of that in just a second. What we're working on, the PLSS corner location, that's Public Land Survey System. We've been locating the section corners throughout the county over the past several months. We have a planometric data project going on, which I'll demonstrate in just a few minutes, and another example of false small farmstead project we've been doing for the assessor's office. Things to come, parcels. Actually, that should probably be moved into the work in progress, because we've just moved into the actual parcel compilation process. That's the biggest task we have, and probably the largest one we will ever face. That's mapping all the parcels in the county and doing it as accurately as we can within the resources that we have available. That will, I'm sure, take the majority of the next two years to accomplish that. Once the parcels are done, we can map very accurate administrative boundaries. Internet applications will follow, all kinds of GIS projects. I've just listed a few that came to the top of my head, but crime and location studies. GIS is an excellent planning tool, economic development tool. Property assessment will be greatly facilitated for the assessor's office. All kinds of projects will follow once this is all put together. Jumping from this, this was my one-slide slideshow. Going out of this, I'll go right into the GIS and just get started. PLSS, this particular slide right here. I'm going to zoom in on that one. It's kind of hard to see, but all these little green stars here that cover most of the county, those indicate section corners that we have located. In fact, since I put this little map together, we've covered this area and this area as well. So, the entire county has been covered with the exception of Champaign and the immediate surrounding areas. And that is because they're currently conducting a GPS survey, which will give us very accurate corners. So, we're going to wait until they finish that, and they'll supply us that information. Let's see. Other than corners, the next thing to do, once the corners have been located, actually, essentially connect the dots. Put in the section lines, the quarter section lines, section centers. When this is done, we'll have a nice section grid across the entire county, and this is critical as a framework for building parcels. So, I'm going to zoom in on, find it, one particular section and give you kind of a brief example of how we've been doing this. The tan lines you see represent section lines that we received from the state. These are not very accurate. The state doesn't advertise them as such, but we really needed a more accurate grid just to begin our mapping process. This is Washington Street running right through here. This is the Brookton Center. My office is right in the corner right there. I'm going to zoom in on this green star right here, this quarter section corner on Washington. As I get closer to this, you'll see that green star kind of moves away from the tan line here. This is where we felt the section corner should be. And with a lot of these points, I have additional information linked to this. This is a GPS survey that was done by Burns &amp; Clancy for the city of Urbana. The majority of Urbana's points have been located through GPS survey techniques. This is very, very accurate. It's kind of hard to read, but these numbers right here represent state plane coordinate values, exact locations of that corner, down to a thousandth of a foot. So, that's as accurate as we can possibly get. Let's see. I'll zoom in on this a little bit. You can see field measurements right here. They draw a diagram of what's out there. Thirty-one point six feet from a manhole cover to the section corner. If we go back to the picture, we can actually see that. That's the manhole cover right there. And I will take a rough measurement from here out to there, and in the lower-left corner of the screen is the actual measurement, thirty-one point seven I'm getting right now, which is, I'm just not very accurate in doing this, but you can see that's very precisely That's the best possible scenario. A GPS Global Positioning System survey has been done to locate the point. Unfortunately, less than 10% of the points in the county have actually been located by GPS. We're lucky in that there have been several surveys done. Urbana's done one, Rantoul, Champaign is currently doing one, and there are some other scattered points throughout the county. Now, I'm zooming in on the northwest corner, and as I get closer here, there's my little green star. Here's the section corner from the state. A rough distance from that corner over to here is about eighty feet. With that amount of error, we could fit an entire city lot inside that amount of error. There's no way we can accurately map parcels starting from that far off. This is a case where we didn't have GPS information to work from. We'll use, or used in this process, whatever source of information we can get our hands on. In this case, a traditional survey had been done. These are all on file at the County Recorder's Office, and we scanned all these documents, and these will actually be linkable, just like I did there. You can click on that little star and display the source document that was used to locate these things. Can we go in a little bit closer? This one tells us that our northeast corner is five feet from a power pole, eight point four feet from a handrail. If we look back at the picture, I know it's kind of fuzzy, but you can see a power pole right here. This is the shadow of it. So, at the convergence of the pole and the shadow, I measure five feet from there, gets me to about right here. Even fuzzier over here, these are actually the handrails on the...these are steps going down to the street curb. So, I can take a rough distance from there, eight point four feet, and you can see, I'm not going to be exact, I'll probably be within a foot or so, and I know when I get out here, the five feet from here, eight point four feet from here, that I'm probably within one or two feet of where that corner's supposed to be versus eighty feet from what the state gave us. So, that's not quite as good as GPS, but that's the best we have to go by in this case. So, throughout the county, we've identified every source we have and have located all those corners best we possibly can.
In that case, then, you just ignore the state, the information you got from the state, because it was eighty feet off?
Yes, absolutely. We'll build an entire new grid for the county section lines. It'll be far more accurate than what they provided. Ultimately, it probably will, yeah. In fact, I know the Department of Revenue is very interested in counties being able to provide district boundaries, taxing district boundaries, which ultimately, we'll be able to do that for them. Let's see. Going back to my overall picture here. After that, some of the products, well, let's see, there's another one in the works, and that would be the planometric project. I'll show you a quick glimpse of that. Planometric data, in this case, means the pavement edges of all the paved streets in the county, center lines of all paved streets. It's kind of hard to see, but the pinkish-purple lines are pavement edges. The green lines in the middle are, those are the street center lines. We're also getting all water features in the county. This is the boneyard. And not only the banks are digitized, but also a center line. And there are dots at every road intersection. These little nodes will tell us which streets intersect at that point. So, when this is done, we'll be able to ask the computer, where is the intersection of Green and Lincoln, and it'll zoom us instantly right to this point here. Each one of these center lines is also intelligent, in that I can click on it, and it will tell me this is Lincoln Avenue. Also, the address range for the segment I just picked, three hundred to, I'm sorry, three hundred to four ninety-eight and three oh one to four ninety-nine on that particular address segment. So, this information, ultimately, MetCAD is planning on using these center lines in their process with their automated dispatch system. This is being done by a firm out of St. Louis called Sanborn Associates, and it's well underway. We're hoping to have the project completed for the county by the end of April. What's unique about this, and the reason we couldn't do this internally, is that it's all coming to us three dimensionally. And I'm going to quickly go away from Urbana for a second and out to Mohammed, just because we have a little more relief out there. This is the intersection of seventy-four and forty-seven. If you've ever driven through there, you know, there's kind of a, you come into the valley here and then come up out the other side. This is the forest preserve here, Mohammed's over here. What I can do with this is actually take a look at it three dimensionally. The photo itself is actually at sea level, zero elevation, and these lines are roughly six to seven hundred feet, as most of our county is around here. And these actually are digitized according to the elevation of the line itself. As I zoom in on this, I know at this point, it looks fairly flat, which kind of illustrates how flat our county really is, because that's one of the hillier spots in the county. You can see a little rise of about twenty or thirty feet back here at the cemetery. I'll zoom in on the intersection. As we get closer, if I spin this again, you can actually see the bridge deck about twenty feet over forty-seven as it runs underneath it. You can also see the dip in forty-seven as it comes up to the intersection and goes through it. If we spin this around and look down seventy-four, now you can see it coming down into the valley, and it starts back up as it crosses the Sangamon and goes east from there. So, this information will be very helpful, particularly for water runoff problems. We'll be able to determine the exact drop over a specific distance in a stream. The county highway department's very interested in this, in calculating water runoff in ditches and ditch maintenance problems they have to deal with. Okay. Jumping back to the main GIS. The next one, the electronic tax map atlas in the county. This little slide right here, and this particular property is probably, you've probably seen quite often recently, but I'll show it to you one more time anyways. This is the intersection of one fifty and one thirty. The electronic tax map atlas, these are the tax maps that you would see in the county assessor's office. That's actually what you're seeing. We scanned all of those and rectified those to fit over our ortho photos for the county. So, essentially, this is just like you would see. If you go in and request a composite print of the tax map and the aerial photo, this is now all available across the county digitally. So, you can put this on a PC and print out whatever property you want from this with the photo behind it. These are the rural area tax maps, four hundred scale. I'm going to pan over a little bit over to Berenger Commons over here, and then I'll zoom in. You can see right here, there's no detailed information over Berenger Commons, other than a specific map number for the more detailed maps. As we zoom in on this, let me zoom right in on the middle. It'll take a minute to generate, but now we'll get the more accurate, not only photos, but also the more accurate tax maps will come up on top of this. And this information has parcel number, it can be derived from this, lot number, parcel and lot dimensions, subdivision names, block numbers. Right-of-way demand information is there and now available across the county. And I believe, Bill, did I get that to you? I think I got that to you some time back. So, that information is all here and now accessible to you. Let's see. Jumping forward. That concludes what's currently available, and now a quick look at some things that are coming, or kind of some fun things that we can do with this when it's all said and done. There are quite a few data sets that have been completed by various sources, both federal, state, local, that are available to us, and I'm just going to take a look at a few. These are digital soils. This has been provided to us from the Soil Conservation Office over in the west side of Champaign. These are available across the county. And this seems to be having a little trouble generating here. If I can force it to hurry up. These actually, these are soils from the state that will identify the soil type and the area with some information, the soil name, certain attributes about that soil, the productivity index. And this is the east edge of Urbana. This is Stone Creek right here. If we zoom in, I'm going to zoom in, let's see, catch the edge of Stone Creek and just north of there. Zoom in on that, and then the soils will come up. You'll notice that I've got the photos behind it, the tax map information. As soon as the soils come up, they're going to bury all that stuff. I apologize for the time and this, but those soils have a lot of information to them. And it's still not done generating. Now, we've got the soil name up there. I'm going to make those soils somewhat transparent. If I can see the right...okay, there it is. Get the right layer. Now, let's make those roughly fifty, sixty percent transparent. We can still see the soil polygons, yet also see the photo and the property boundaries underneath these. Ultimately, when our parcels are done, what we'll be able to do is isolate the exact acreage of soil types within any given parcel in the county. This is going to be particularly useful to the county assessor, but also for planning and development, anything that might go on out here. It's very useful to know what soils are underneath there. Let me identify one of these polygons. I'll pick on this one right here. Make sure I get the right layer. I can't read it up there. Apologies. I have to look at my screen to do this. Okay, I'll try that one more time. And if my machine would hurry up. Wyonet silt loam soil, productivity index eighty-nine, AVG corn production index one twenty-one. So, information like that is available across the county. Drainage districts, also available across the county. And I'll zoom out to get a look at those drainage districts. They're colored by major drainage basin. If I expand this a little bit, this is the Embra Basin down in the purple here. The green is the Cascasia. Over here, Salt Fork Basin. Each one of these basins, we can identify one of these, and it should tell us information, including the commissioner's names, the attorney's name, the name of that district. This information is available digitally across the county. Let's take a look at some information from the federal government. Census Bureau data. I'll zoom over to this window in the corner here, take a close look at that. This information is available to us. The purple lines indicate tract boundaries, I think. Let me double-check that and...yeah, tract boundaries are purple. If I turn those off, now, I can see it better on my screen, but there are light-green lines running through there. Those are block group boundaries. And if I turn those off, the actual tan and yellow blocks, those are individual census blocks. They're currently colored according to population density. The yellow, zero to thirty-four folks residing in those blocks, all the way to the darkest, eight hundred and sixty-two to twenty-five fifty-nine residing in those blocks. If we want to change this map using the computer, if I'm interested in a different bit of information, let's just access the properties behind the census data. And I'll change my symbology of this particular map from population density. Let's change it to a map displaying the distribution of kids aged five to seventeen. This is just another census data category. I'll change the display, tell it to redraw that, and now we've changed the map on the fly. Now, we're looking at district kids aged five to seventeen. Darker areas, of course, out here. This is, I think, Prairie Fields out here? No, not Prairie Fields.
Savannah Green.
Thank you. Savannah Green out here. This information can be intersected with any of the other categories that I showed you. I've also got voting districts, awards. So, all these various data categories can be intersected together. We could derive a, using the census data information, census data, distribution, demographic information for a voting district. Once we've got the parcels mapped, we can use any of these individual polygons to select all the parcels within that. And that will be linked to information, for example, from the county assessor's office. It includes owner information, assessed value information, so you could very quickly come up with a list of owners within a specific polygon of interest. As an economic development tool, a firm from out of town, if they're interested in locating a, at least ten-acre parcel that's zoned commercial or light industrial, that's close to a major thoroughfare, railroad near that, that kind of information can be fed into this system, and you can get an answer in seconds. Where now, through traditional methods, you may have to visit several offices just to get to that, and it might take you a day or two to compile that. So, as an economic development tool, this will be extremely valuable when it's put... let's see, I think I've got one more window to show you. Up here. Zoom in on that one. Now, we're looking at downtown Urbana. This is Lincoln Square over here. This information was provided by the city of Urbana, just showing some of the things that they've done. Building outlines. There are some pavement outlines here. This is vegetation outline up here, and you can see some of the street names in here. Actually, there are several different layers of information here. Let me take a look at some of these. Let's see here. Planometric information. When this is delivered, we can put that on top of it. Sanitary information from Public Works. Those are sanitary lines running through downtown. Also got some actual parcel polygons. Ultimately, when this is, this project is completed, we'll have parcel polygons across the entire county. If I can click on one of these, let's see if I can get the parcel here. Whoops, wrong button. Okay, try that one more time. Springfield Avenue's the address. See if I'm looking at the right layer. Try that one more time. Owner unknown. Let's try another one.
I think that's the parking lot.
Oh, okay. I just picked over here, and this is telling me it's Bucy Plaza. Owner, First Bucy Corp. So, that type of information will cross the county, so you can very quickly do a search by owner name, by parcel number, by street address, and within seconds, get to the piece of property you're looking for. Also, just having a little fun with this, oh, I skipped one thing I was going to mention. One of the products we're ending up with are thousands of scanned documents. I showed you a couple of corner survey records. We're also in the process of scanning subdivision surveys, and we'll have probably, by the time we're done, a couple thousand of these, just an example of one of those. And these will all be accessible through the GIS, so you can get to a particular subdivision you're interested in and click on that and display the survey, the original survey behind it. Okay, back to downtown Urbana. I'm going to turn on some building outlines here. Lincoln Square, this is the Jumers Lodge here, courthouse over here. We can have fun with some of this data. In this case, I've taken the information, and thanks again to Urbana, I don't know if it was Ben Fisher that collected this, but he gave me a little bit of information telling me how many floors are in each of these buildings. So, I was able to use that information, and I'm going to zoom in, take a look at this. We can take a look at this three dimensionally and zoom in on downtown. There's the courthouse over here. You can see the front of the courthouse, a little taller than the rest of the building around it. Jumers over here. Let's zoom in on this view right here. And then I'm going to give this particular aerial photograph right here a little bit of a transparency. As we make that transparent now, we can start to see the sanitary lines running underneath the surface. And that's the actual location of the sanitary lines. Urbana Public Works provided this information for me. These little tiny rectangles here indicate the location of manholes. So, they seem to rise up to the surface there. As we zoom on this, you can kind of see how that's actually underground. In fact, if we go underground, we can get a better view of where these things are. In fact, right over here, this is Bucy Drive-Thru right over here. So, we can see there's a sanitary line running right under the parking lot in the Bucy Bank Drive-Thru right there. And this is kind of fun to play with this stuff. I had a little bit of fun with this, but that just quickly gives you an idea of the capabilities of the system and ultimately, what can be done with this. And I know I went through a lot in a hurry, and I'd be glad to give you another look at something if you'd like to, or answer any questions you have, but that's a quick presentation of where we are today.
Thank you very much. I'm Mark Tolson. Ms. Wyman?
Is this something that someone could just go onto the county's website and access?
Not currently, no.
Okay.
The plan is, and time-wise, I would say, not at least for six months, and realistically longer than that, to have internet applications set up, but there's a great deal of discussion that will have to take place first as to what is going to be available and how we make that available. Certainly, some simple access to parcel information. Our plan would be to make that available to the general public, but I know there are some privacy issues that have to be a great deal of discussion first, and that is sometime down the road.
I remember, I think, some of us attended a general meeting at the GIS down at the Urbana Middle School in auditorium maybe a couple of years back, and I think the presenter was someone from Rock Island who had said that this was a way to be able to bring businesses who were searching, or, you know, someone who was searching for locations, be able to say, well, where's a good business location, or where's a good location to build, an apartment building, and that sort of thing, and something that could be accessible. And he claimed that that was why, that had helped spur, I think, economic development in their region. And I don't know if that's a similar anticipation with this?
It is, yes. In fact, we've talked with, hopefully I get the name right, Jill Guth, EDC, and they're very interested in using an excellent tool for them. We're hoping, actually, that they'll join the consortium by next summer and use it for that very purpose. Down the road, after the map is built, then we can start to have fun with applications. And one of them might be setting up an application for some commercial entity to log on and play with those kinds of questions. Ask a couple of questions like that and get an answer online as to what properties might be interesting to them.
Thank you. Mayor Satterthwaite.
Mark, I was noticing one parcel in particular. I mean, you were talking about ownership, and some of these things, like the nature of the buildings and the sewer lines and stuff like that stays constant for long periods of time. Ownership of property, of course, can change relatively rapidly. What's the process for updating that information? So, are you able to get the recorder's office to give you the date and properties that have changed hands so that you can enter the new... that have changed hands so that you can enter the new data on a regular basis?
Yeah.
Because in fact, one of the properties I saw, um, that the owner is an old owner. So, already, the information is outdated. Um, and how do you, how do you get that information, how do you keep that information current?
Well, that, that will be a challenge when we get there. We will be working closely with Recorder's Office and the Assessor's Office. In fact, there, uh, I'm sure there will be a, a GIS station in the Assessor's Office, potentially in the Recorder's Office, too. I don't know about that. But the maintenance process really will begin after we've got the maps built. We've got a long ways to go to get there, but we'll be hooked up to the Assessor's database digitally, so they just take place. Those will be reflected in the information. And whether it's a live link or, for example, a separate link that's refreshed every morning, we're looking at not being out of date more than twenty-four hours.
Right.
It's gonna take some work to get there, even some, and the Assessor's been very cooperative. I know she's very eager to see this, but it's going to take some enhancements to, to her system, too, to get to that point. But that's the goal, that we'll be, uh, linked to her database and seeing that information as current as we can get it.
So, you'll be doing that township by township then for the Assessor's?
Well, she's got a database that covers the entire county.
Okay, oh, see, okay.
All the parcels in the county, so we will link into that. In many cases, when a, when a property is sold, the shape of that property isn't affected at all.
Right.
At least nine times out of ten, just the ownership. So, in that case, there's no change to the map that has to occur. And as long as we're connected to that database and that record is changed, we refresh that record the next morning, we see it. We've gotta stay on top of any new splits, any subdivisions, because that will affect the map. So, that process will get started after we've got a good percentage of the mapping complete.
Yeah, that's, uh, yeah, that's a real challenge, and once you get all this data in there, it's keeping it updated, so, you know, information is only as good as its accuracy. And if it's not accurate.
That's right.
Information, it's not really.
And every day, it gets a little more out of date, and the value decreases, so.
Thanks. Mr. Adams?
Um, if somebody wanted to access the data that's there now, where would they go? How would they do it?
Well, right now, it's available to the consortium members, and there's a great amount of data. The Ortho photo set by itself is about twenty-one gigabytes of data, so it's just more of a load than we can offer, uh, over a modem or even over a T1 line. So, right now, I've got an external hard drive that I've simply passed around to the consortium members that's got all that data on it that they can download. For someone outside of the consortium, they would need to approach one of the consortium members or ideally come over to, uh, to my office at the Brookins Center, and the information is for sale.
Okay.
So, we can provide it on disk.
Okay. Who, who are the consortium members?
Right now, uh, the county, the University of Illinois, uh, city of Urbana, city of Champaign, Rantoul, Mohammed, Savoy. Did I miss anybody? Okay.
I see.
We're hoping to, uh, some other agencies that we know are interested, EDC, the sanitary district, and ultimately, um, Tolono and St. Joe are both large enough to participate in this.
Okay. So, if John Regitz wants to use this as an economic development tool or get some information, he can do that, and he won't have to pay, but somebody who's not a member of the consortium would have to come pay for the information or whatever.
There are two ways that the, uh, we, the Policy Committee has established that we can provide data to any of the consortium members. They can provide data to a contractor, someone doing work for the city of Urbana. Information could be provided temporarily to that contractor free of charge, but they need to sign a license agreement that really restricts their usage and also requires them to destroy the data when they're done using it. Or it can be purchased. We've actually already had, just this year, three sales of Ortho photographs, two to local firms. Um, let's see, we've had a couple other requests coming in, so there are requests for the information.
Like, how do you deter, how do you charge for something like this?
Well, pricing has been set at fifty dollars a disk, and on a single disk, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I believe about twenty photographs fit on a disk. Um, oh, gosh, I don't remember exactly the cost for the whole county, but it, it's over a thousand dollars if you wanted to purchase every photo in the county. In most cases, folks have kind of a regional, uh, interest, and, uh, fifty to a couple hundred dollars seems to meet their needs.
Okay. Do they have to also purchase, uh, purchase specialized software to be able to use the information on the disk, or is that included?
Well, that depends which particular data category they're interested in. The aerial photographs can be viewed by Paint Shop Pro or actually inserted into a Word doc if you want it. They're pretty good size, so you'd have to have a pretty good computer to do that. But the electronic tax map atlas, yes, you'd need some, uh, GIS software. AutoCAD, for example, would view that information. ESRI makes some software that's reasonably affordable for GIS software, ArcView, but you would have to have specialized software to view that.
Okay. Um, let's see there. Oh, the other question I had is, how does this affect surveys if the state section lines are off by eighty feet in some cases? I mean, those corners are often where the starting point of a survey to define property boundaries. What, what hap- what happens with that?
Well, local surveyors don't, don't use that state information.
Okay.
That state information was compiled very quickly just to create a statewide source to be available for free. I believe they were digitized from USGS topo sheets, but local surveyors will work from recorded information over at the Recorder's Office, which is exactly what we went through in building our grid.
So, yours just can grow up with those surveys?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's all.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Tolson? Ms. Chenoweth?
Most of my questions have been asked, but I guess, um, the final question I have just, it, it's somewhat selfish in that every single time I, uh, have a decision, just the aerial maps alone would make a huge difference in my ability to be able to see data. I actually almost always have to drive to where we're making a decision, drive around, and that's still a good idea, but, um, given the amount of decisions that we're making, and as a consortium member, would you be handing off the data to our staff, and then we would request photos of our staff digitally?
Yes.
Is that the line of, okay. And, uh, the photos, you said, um, uh, I'm assuming they're JPG. What formats are the photos in?
TIFF.
They're TIFFs, okay. So, um, uh, so basically, the, the, um, software that you're using to kind of be able to render different layers of things wouldn't be available. It'd just be a static image, and then you could use the zoom in and out function to be able to get in close to an image.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the, and you said that about twenty photos on six-hundred-and-fifty megabyte, um, CD, so they're pretty large photos, and?
The photos are about twenty-five megapiece.
Okay.
You could, if you wanted to.
So, quite a bit of detail.
Save them to a JPG and, and cut that file size down somewhat, but.
Um, okay, that's all. Thank you. And, and those are available currently, then? The, they're just the aerial photographs, the ones that you've already done are currently available through our, um, Public Works Department?
Yeah, the aerials are available. Uh, the electronic tax maps that I showed you are available. Uh, there are several other categories. All the, uh, section corner monument records, for example, that we've scanned, those are Several other kind of minor categories are currently available. The, the section corners, actually, those green stars you saw, those are currently available.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much, Mr. Tolson.
You're welcome.
Fascinating.
Very impressive.
Very exciting.
Question, but a comment. I mean, this is, um, you know, a long way and, and a few years, and so you were just now seeing the capabilities with your illustration of, uh, you know, what a dynamic tool this can be for decision-making, uh, planning, as you say, you know, we'd be able to talk about crime statistics and, uh, you know, police response to high-crime areas, uh, just any number of things. I think, you know, even getting trees on there and finding out, clicking on trees, what's, when's the last time it was pruned, you know, how big a tree is it? I mean, it's just amazing what you can do with a system like this when you put all the different layers of information on. And so, um, you know, I think it's just gonna be a fantastic tool for, um, for a variety of different things, and it's, it's really exciting. So, uh, thanks for the presentation, and we'll look for better things to come.
You're welcome. I just ask for your patience as we, uh.
Yeah, I know it takes a long time to put that stuff in. I can't imagine, you know, all that information of where the manholes are and how far below the ground they are, and, you know, what buildings they run under and so forth. They're just incredible. So, uh, like I say, you know, we'll be looking for, uh, even better things in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let me just keep moving right down our agenda here. Um, the next item on the agenda is number six ordinance, number two-thousand-four-zero-one-zero-one-oh. Uh, this is an ordinance changing a street name, Tatman Court to Industrial Circle, and we're gonna hear from our Public Works Director, Bill Gray.
Thank you. Recently, uh, council looked at a revision to a final plat to the East Urban Industrial Park, and as the plans and specifications and the project is moving forward, we need to address and name the street extension for Tatman Court, which is the east-west, uh, extension of, of Tatman Court, which is just west of High Cross Road. And what made the most sense to the developer and his staff was to rename south version of Tatman Court, which goes past the Urbana post office area, and give that a name of South Industrial Circle. So, in order to do that, uh, it does take a city council ordinance to approve such, um, of action. And again, when the developer originally subdivided and came up with this preliminary plat, um, I think there was a vision of a larger lot in the area where currently is this east Tatman Court new extension here. So, um, things change, subdividing is dynamic, and, um, as he's finding purchasers of the lots and needs for the lots, this is how things have changed here. So, um, be happy to answer any questions, but the new name is Industrial Circle, which is a street name that, to the best of our knowledge, is not used anywhere else in the Champaign-Urbana-Civil area.
Any questions, Mr. Gray? Motion?
We send this to council with recommendation for approval.
Motion by Ms. Wyman, second by Mr. Hayes. Discussion? None? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, next, we've got, uh, three ordinances from the Traffic Commission and, and your packet, they're stapled together, at least mine are stapled together in the order of B, C, and A, but we'd probably take all three of those together. Um, ordinance amending Schedule L of the traffic code prohibiting parking at Oregon Street and Race Street. Um, ordinance, uh, establishing curb loading zones on certain streets, six-oh-two West Green, and, uh, an ordinance, uh, amending the traffic code to establish a tow-away zone on, uh, in front of six-oh-two West Green. Mr. Gray?
At, uh, recent Traffic Commission meetings, uh, these items came up. Uh, I'll take, I guess, B first, then. And item B is basically a request from the First Presbyterian Church on West Green Street. And on Sunday mornings through afternoons, there are, uh, church services that occur, which include the Korean Church as services that same day in the afternoon, and the very accessible location to the front of the church for, uh, people to be picked up and dropped off. And it's a request that this area be given a fifteen-minute loading zone area for the, these times on Sunday with a tow-away, uh, also, uh, attached or stipulated to it, which is item C and number seven, agenda item seven. And that's just to, um, provide additional enforcement or impact if someone would choose to violate those timeframes for the loading. There is an impact to parking, though, on Green Street here by doing this on Sundays, and that is three spaces would be not used for parking. And I know Green Street is a, uh, a highly-used parking street area, but this was all considered by the commission, and, uh, if Mr. Adams wants to elaborate any further on this, but that's, that's the request here for the church.
Any question, Ray? I just have one. Is it, well, it'll be posted as no parking seven AM to four PM on Sundays? I'm wondering about cars, if car, cars can park there overnight, but they've gotta be gone by seven AM?
Seven AM, yes.
Yeah, okay. And if they're not, the church can call to have them towed? Would be the same type of signs that are, that are used to say no parking three AM and no parking on snow days, that type of thing?
That's correct, right. And there'd be arrows, you know, pointing between the three car lengths in front of the church.
Um, is that right with everyone? If we just go through the other two ordinances and then, but, yeah.
Okay. Well, the second ordinance is then just stipulated, it's a different schedule in our traffic ordinance, but, um, it's the tow-away zone, which is item C. Then A is, um, there's been a, a few very severe accidents that have occurred, and this is also school crossing at Oregon and Race Street. And we, um, pulled out the records on the accident report details, and, uh, basically, it's a lack of, um, visibility, and we're not quite sure in the days that they occurred if there were larger vehicles parked, but it's an eastbound movement, uh, where there was obscure of the stop sign, and, and literally someone just ran through the intersection and, and encountered a car on, or, Race Street. So, we're recommending, we've looked at it in our engineers, and we're recommending that the no-parking area be pulled further to the west, thirty feet, or extend the yellow curb, if you will, so that, again, this will remove at least a space or so, but this will hopefully, um, correct the situation where the stop sign for eastbound traffic, at least as we could tell in these, um, few accidents that occurred, was not very visible. So, that is our, um, recommendation and support by the Traffic Commission.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gray about these? Is there a motion?
I move we send all three ordinances, numbers, uh, number two-thousand-four-zero-one-zero-three, two-thousand-four-zero-one-zero-four, and two-thousand-four-zero-one-zero-five to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Wyman, second by Ms. Chenoweth. Is there discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.